Resolution number 21-956, in the matter of journeying out of the executive session.
So, second?
Motion made by Mr. Bitten, second by Mr. Lewis, discussion, vote?
Vote on motion 91-956. Mr. Bitten?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
We're now out of executive and we have a hearing scheduled for tamely, pretty darn close.
Yes.
So, with that, let's...
Resolution number 21-957, public hearing for consideration of the Buell number 542 drainage improvement petition filed by Dana Buell and others.
So, move.
Second. Motion made in second, discussion, vote?
Vote on motion 21-957. Mr. Bitten?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Resolution number 21-958, in the matter of approving for a specific occurrence a suspension of Rule 3 speaker registration, Rule 4 limitations, and Rule 7 public comment procedure from the rules governing the public comment before the Board of County Commissioners of Delaware County, Ohio.
So, move.
Second. Motion made in second, discussion, vote?
Vote on motion 21-958. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Bitten?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Okay, welcome everyone. I'm gonna kinda go through kinda the game plan we're gonna follow today, which will help everyone understand what will take place. There is a sign-in sheet in the back. I hope that you had an opportunity to sign that when you came in. If not, we can certainly make it available to you. We will hear a report from the county engineer at Soil and Water Conservation District. There's copies of that report back in the table in the back as well. We will hear if there's any questions from the board that might seek clarification. The board will acknowledge any receipt of written letters in favor or against the petition. And after questions, we will give a time for testimony from the landowners. Those speaking for or against the project must be either an owner, as defined in Section 6131.01 of the Revised Code, or an attorney speaking on behalf of an owner. And those are the only people that can speak in this hearing. During testimony, you will be asked to take an oath, which I will administer. When it is time to offer testimony, we will work our way through the participants, and testimony will continue if new information comes up or additional people wish to speak. We'll go with those speaking in favor of the petition and then those opposed to the petition. After testimony, the board will close the public hearing, or the board may choose to continue the hearing. After the hearing is closed, the board will decide whether to proceed with the survey and design or dismiss the petition. The board considers the following in their decision: Whether the board finds that the proposed improvement is necessary, that it will be conducive to the public welfare, and that also finds it is reasonably certain that the benefits of the proposed improvements will exceed the cost. If the board proceeds with the petition, the Delaware County Engineer will prepare plans, reports, and individual schedules or assessments for the project. When plans are complete, a final hearing will be set, notification of the hearing will be given to the landowners, and the board will commend and consider the project. And that will be at some future date, obviously. With that, come forward and Brett, introduce yourself and...
Good morning, Commissioners. Brett Bacon, Delaware Soil and Water Conservation District. I will read the first hearing report into the record and then be happy to answer any questions the board may have. First hearing report, Buell number 542 watershed drainage petition per ORC 6131, October 7th, 2021. This report has been prepared for the preliminary hearing on a drainage improvement petition filed by David Buell, trustee, and others on December 15th, 2020. The original petition has been signed by 22 individuals representing 23 of the 392 parcels in the watershed. The general location and course of the requested improvements are quoted from the petition as follows: In Delaware County, Berkshire, and Berlin Township, within the Buell number 542 watershed, and generally following but not limited to the course and termini of existing improvements. The following is the nature of the work petitioned, as quoted from the petition: To generally improve drainage, both surface and subsurface, to a good and sufficient outlet by replacing, repairing, or altering the existing improvements as required and/or creating new surface and subsurface drainage mains or laterals as requested by this, or as required, excuse me, by this petition process. This petition has been submitted according to Section 6131 of the Ohio Revised Code, which authorizes the Board of Commissioners to act on behalf of benefited property owners to make drainage improvements. If the Board of Commissioners decides to proceed with the project, the costs related to the improvements and the development of plans, reports, and schedules are assessed to the landowners in the watershed according to the benefit received to their watershed acreage. These special assessments will be added to the property taxes for each property and can be spread over a maximum of a 15-year period. Property owners may also choose to pay their assessment in a lump sum payment prior to placement on their property taxes. Additionally, the improvements will be placed on the Delaware County Drainage Maintenance Program in perpetuity per ORC Section 6137, and the annual maintenance assessment will appear on property tax statements as a special assessment in the same manner as the construction assessments. These annual maintenance assessments are generally in the range of 2% to 5% of the construction assessment. The decision to approve a petition project is a three-step process. First, a viewing of the proposed improvement is conducted for the Commissioners to familiarize themselves with the watershed and general conditions. The Commissioners conducted the viewing for this project by drone video on May 24th, 2021. Next, a preliminary hearing is held to consider the initial feasibility of the proposal. It is this preliminary first hearing that is before us today. If this petition is approved, a final hearing will be conducted to further consider this petition. At that time, final details such as engineering plans and specifications, cost estimates, and a proposed schedule of assessments will be known. Existing conditions: The Delaware Soil and Water Conservation District and Delaware County Engineers Office have made the following observations of the watershed using onsite evaluation and a review of available historic records, aerial photography, topographic mapping, and soils mapping. The Buell number 542 watershed is approximately 602 acres. The predominant land uses within the watershed are currently agricultural, rural residential, and platted subdivision. There are also areas of road right-of-way and woods. Improvements have been previously constructed in the watershed utilizing the ORC 6131 petition process in 1923 and 1929. These improvements consisted of open channel construction and subsurface drain installation. The drainage system does not appear to be functioning at or near optimum capacity due to a lack of comprehensive maintenance and the generally deteriorated condition of the infrastructure. The lack of uniform grading has led to significant ponding in many areas of the watershed, and the subsurface drain system appears to have significant areas of structural failure as observed by sporadic blowouts along its course. These conditions are indicators of an overburdened, unmaintained, and aged drainage infrastructure. While the existing drainage system still provides some degree of drainage benefit, it does not appear to function as a good and sufficient outlet. Estimate a cost factors favorable unfavorable benefit versus cost. ORC 6131 requires the county engineer to state in a report factors favorable and unfavorable to a proposed project, estimate the cost of the project, and state an opinion as to whether the benefits of the project exceed the cost. The following information is presented for your consideration. Construction estimate: The proposed project would begin on the east side of South 3Bs and K Road and extend upstream to the east to create a good and sufficient outlet for those parcels that have signed the petition. The primary items of work along the entire length would include open channel reconstruction, surface drain shaping and grading, the installation of subsurface drains, the installation of a grade stabilization structure and blind inlets, brush and vegetation removal, and seeding and mulching of disturbed areas. If the project proceeds to a final hearing, portions of the watershed may be further divided into sections to better define the areas of work and the associated costs and benefits. This level of detail is not determined for the preliminary hearing and is only undertaken if the petition moves forward to a second or final hearing. The cost estimate as presented below reflects the entire requested project area. Construction: $244,491.90. Project administration, survey, and engineering, 15% of the construction estimate, $36,673.79. Drainage maintenance, ORC 6137, first year startup, 5% of the construction estimate, $12,224.60. Total project estimate, $293,390.29. Notes: It is important to understand that the above estimates are preliminary and made in the absence of a current detailed topographic survey of the project area. The above estimate does not contain a contingency amount. The amount of necessary contingency would be evaluated as part of the survey and engineering design of the project and added to the estimate presented at the final hearing. Contingency cost is typically estimated at 15% to 20% of the final construction estimate. Should the project fail to be approved at the final hearing, the benefiting landowners, as defined by ORC 6131, may still be responsible for the cost of project administration, survey, and engineering design. Assessments: If the project moves forward to the second hearing, the Ohio Revised Code instructs the county engineer to calculate the assessments to individual property owners based on the benefits received from the improvements for the various properties in the watershed. ORC 6131 states that uplands that have been removed from their natural state by deforestation, cultivation, artificial drainage, urban development, or other man-made causes shall be considered as benefited by an improvement required to dispose of the accelerated flow of water from the uplands. Benefits are further defined by the ORC as elimination or reduction of damage from flood, removal of water conditions that jeopardize public health, safety, or welfare, and increased value of land resulting from the improvement. It should be noted that property owners are only assessed for those improvements that are located downstream from their properties. No property is assessed for improvements located upstream. The public agencies that own rights-of-way for public roads and other public lands are also assessed for both construction and maintenance costs in the same manner as private property owners. Individual parcel assessments are not calculated for the preliminary hearing and are only calculated if the petition moves forward to a second or final hearing. Factors favorable unfavorable? Factors favorable to the improvement: Improved surface and subsurface drainage in the watershed; Improved outlet for subsurface drainage components of household sewage treatment systems and for residential drainage systems; Reduction of future deterioration of surface and subsurface drainage infrastructure; Annual inspections, maintenance, and protection of the improvement in perpetuity. Factors unfavorable to the improvement: Temporary land use disruption during construction; Cost of construction and maintenance may be a burden to some landowners; Removal of existing trees and brush in improvement area. Benefits versus cost: Assessments for property within the watershed are calculated based on the benefits derived. A publication from the Ohio State University Extension titled "Returns to Farm Drainage" details several studies conducted by Ohio State researchers on the effects of drainage on crop yields. The studies show that fields with good drainage will produce higher yields than fields that have poor drainage. A recently completed 25-year study showed that subsurface drainage increased corn yields by 24% to 39%, and increased soybean yields by 13% to 46%. The same study also analyzed the return on investment for installing subsurface drainage in a field. It found that for corn, $4 is returned for every $1 invested, and for soybeans, $3 is returned for every $1 invested. To state it generally, the benefits of drainage will equal the increased yield multiplied by the market price. The increased value or benefit for residential properties is much more subjective and difficult to quantify. For residential properties, the lack of an adequate drainage outlet can negatively impact the condition of household sewage treatment systems, potentially limiting the value of the home for resale. Should the existing system fail, the cost to perform repairs or construct an alternate sewage treatment system can range from the thousands to tens of thousands of dollars. It would also be reasonable to consider the cost of environmental degradation due to residential sewage treatment systems that may not be functioning properly. Other benefits that are commonly perceived as a result of drainage improvements focus on quality of life and positive neighborhood perception. Communities that have planned and maintained stormwater drainage infrastructures generally have higher resale values than those communities that are known to have a history of drainage problems or flooding. Conclusions: Based on all of the information gathered and generated for this project, I believe this project is technically feasible and would adequately serve the project area's drainage needs. However, the testimony brought to the board by the landowners as to whether the benefits of this project exceed the cost should be given significant consideration in the decision to move forward with this project. Should the current petition be approved to proceed to a final hearing, the petition bond will be returned, and detailed plans, specifications, estimated costs, and a scheduled assessments would be prepared. Additionally, a benefit versus cost analysis will also be performed to further determine the feasibility of advancing this proposed project.
Thank you, Brett. Is there any questions from the board?
No.
I have a couple of questions, Brett. The water flow is from east to west?
That's correct.
And the work you're proposing to do is along the yellow and black dotted?
Correct. And I will point out, I noticed this the other day when I was looking at this map in preparation for today. On the north side of Cheshire Road would be on parcel 123. The line actually does extend north, parallel to Interstate 71 there. It just has a label, road label, over top of it. So, there is a section there that's not quite obvious.
That's what I thought. I thought when we did the viewing, I thought it extended. The dom went up north along 71.
Yeah, it was one of those, "Ah, label over top of that."
Yeah. The, the, this area has, has had some subdivisions developed within, within it?
That's correct. On the east side, you can see where...
Yeah, there's one on the east side.
Yeah, on the east side where the, I'll say the conglomeration of numbers is, that would be one subdivision, and then kind of in the southern part of the watershed there, on the west side of the highway, there is also another subdivision. That subdivision would drain in, pretty much on the extreme downstream end of a potential project. The one on the east side would obviously be, you know, potentially a lot more use.
Okay. Now, the subdivisions on the east side in particular, since there's, there's a lot of homes, a lot of development work, how has that impacted this watershed, do you think?
Um, I, I can say for, so I can't really speak to the impacts. I think that would be, you know, the landowner's testimony to make. I will say that the stormwater, or a lot of the stormwater infrastructure of that subdivision or those subdivisions utilize the existing drainage infrastructure that is downstream of them, both surface patterns and subsurface drainage patterns. I do know that, you know, a significant amount of drainage comes across the highway at the, I'll say the, if you look at the, the two forks that are south of Cheshire Road on parcel 121, sorry, my map's really small.
Yeah.
There is a ODOT culvert there, and a lot of the drainage coming out of the retention pond for the subdivision on the east side of the highway comes through that culvert and utilizes both, both the surface drainage during high-flow events, but a lot of it drops into the tile there as well. And I think, you know, in high-flow events, quickly overwhelms that subsurface drain tile.
The, the new subdivisions, again primarily on the east side, would be required to, under new subdivision regulations, would be required to have adequate storm sewer?
Correct, yeah. They would be required to meet the county engineer's standards for retainage and discharge rates. And they are on, currently on the drainage maintenance program for the infrastructure within their subdivision.
Okay.
So, that, I'll say that part of their special assessment would, would not be changed by this potential project. If this project proceeds to construction and ultimately being on drainage maintenance, then they would have a percentage share of the new infrastructure that would be constructed because, you know, water obviously leaves their, their subdivision and it would enter the system. So, they would, would in effect have two drainage maintenance assessments or, you know, a construction assessment for some, some part of time.
The work you're proposing to do is along those black and yellow lines?
Yes, currently. Again, those are preliminary estimates. We would obviously, in a watershed of this size and with this number of petition signers, if that's the right word to use, the people that signed the petition, we've obviously not had contact with every single one of those. And should we move to that survey and engineering phase, one of the first things we would do would be to reach out to people that have signed the petition that we've not had prior contact with and see what their, their expectations were.
Okay, thank you, Brett. But to summarize, the property on the east side of 71 is dependent upon a good and sufficient outlet on the west side of 71.
Yes, yes.
Okay. The maps typically have lots of numbers. On my maps I have, I do not have that.
Oh, it's in the map of the board.
Uh, maybe I missed it then. Oh, here it is.
They're very small.
They're pretty small.
I printed this 11 by 17, so I don't know if we could get 11 by 17 through the...
Can we get the map on the screen?
Yes. While you guys are talking, I was gonna wait.
Oh.
Okay, I agree. This is just, it's a large watershed, and to print it on our normal-sized paper, the labels tend to disappear on some of the lots just because of...
I can't read them, but they're pretty small.
Yeah, it's, I agree.
And I apologize, I didn't...
No, no, that's okay.
...to the last page, so I...
Yeah.
With that, is there any other questions from the board? Okay, then we will transition. Are you gonna put the map up?
There's a little bit of a difference with this one. I have a video that's only on the internet. So, if we could play that first, and then that way I can plug it into wherever we have the map.
And the video is regarding?
The, the...
Drone?
No. Regarding the flooding that occurs in that area from one of the, from one of the landowners. Yes, testimony, sorry.
Four or five?
And I sent four, but you...
I sent four as well.
So, is it, somebody here has provided the video?
No, it's actually, she is a landowner, the one, the person that sent the video.
Okay, but no one here has, had provided the video, is that correct? Okay. So, is that permissible? We won't be able to swear I'm in or anything, but...
I'm assuming that she didn't send any type of comments along with the...
There is a comment underneath the video. I think when I pulled up, I'll pull it up now. Sorry.
Landowners are permitted to provide comments before the hearing, so that's how we can consider this. If there's some question about, the question you would have to resolve is, since you're not here to provide context, it's what weight you, you give it, but that's, I mean, that's no different than...
They have information, we can, we can view it and just...
Yes.
But really, will be any comment?
Okay.
With that understanding...
Just go ahead and play this. And I cannot get it to switch, so you have to turn sideways. That is the, that's the culvert, I mean, that's...
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Um, yeah. I'm about halfway through it.
I don't know, does anyone still need to see all six minutes, or?
No.
Uh, I think we get the idea.
Yeah.
So, we, we will look at this much like we would look at a letter received. Can you identify the name of the person that sent it for the record?
Jackie Buell.
Okay. And, okay. So, everybody's comfortable moving forward. So, with that, we will first have those who are here and speaking in favor of the petition. You'll come forward. I will swear you in. I will ask that you provide your name, your address, and your lot number, just so it helps us locate visually where you are, so put some context on your comments. And so, is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the petition? They pointed at you, sir, so I... So, with that, I need you to provide your name.
Lawrence Buell, known as Larry Buell. 6867 Cheshire Road is the address. Lena. I think it's parcel 121.
Very well. And I need to swear you in. If you raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is a truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Proceed.
All right. Some, somewhere in the long past, this ditch was probably, probably petitioned because it has a number and all. I don't know about that. But downstream, the ditch, the tile, have not been maintained, which is causing a problem upstream. Also, one of the problems has been that State of Ohio put in more lanes in the highway in 71, and there was never any correction made for drainage. I don't quite understand why the county hadn't addressed that at the time. When they put in more lanes in the highway, which makes more runoff, they'd never done anything more about the drainage. But as you can see in the video, there's some grass areas and tried to maintain the topsoil. Water continues to flow from the east of our property across the, to continue to wash our topsoil from the farmland. I think that the soil and water is pretty well explained, the downstream part of it, which doesn't get maintained. It's a constant battle. The, the water, I realize surface water, we're gonna have a certain amount of surface water on the surface after a heavy rain. I realize that. But for a day or two after, the water's still flowing across the property, which should have been maintained into a ditch or whatever. So, that, that's, that's the big concern is just continue to have wet property in the, when we should have had correct drainage. But the downstream has not been maintained, and that's the big concern. Any questions?
Do you, are you farming this property?
I absolutely am.
Any other questions from? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else here who is wishing to speak in support of the petition? I will ask twice. Is there anyone else here who is willing, wanting to speak in favor of the petition? With that, we'll move, is there anyone here who wants to speak in opposition to the petition?
Commissioners, you did receive a letter from Mr. STO TS at Hidden Creek Loop on the petition, so just, so that is in the record.
Okay.
Could you repeat that name, Jennifer?
S-T-O-T-S?
Stop.
Anthony Stopz, Hidden, Hidden Creek Loop.
This person's opposed?
Yes.
Okay. One, one last time. Anyone else here wants to speak in opposition to the petition? Okay, with that, vote for directions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would ask the, our clerk to read the closing of the public hearing.
Very well.
Resolution number 21-959, in the matter of closing the public hearing for consideration of the Buell number 542 drainage improvement petition filed by Dana Buell and others.
So, move. Second?
Motion made in second, discussion, vote to close the hearing?
Vote on motion 21-959. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Bitten?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Please, aye.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would move to have the clerk read proceeding with the petition for the Buell number 542 drainage improvement.
Resolution number 21-960, in the matter proceeding with the petition for the Buell number 542 drainage improvement filed by Dana Buell and others, and ordering the Delaware County Engineer to proceed with preparation of reports, plans, and schedules... to proceed with preparation of reports, plans, and schedules for the proposed improvement.
So moved, second.
Motion made by Commissioner Lewis, second by Commissioner Benton. Discussion?
Uh, yes, I actually have some personal knowledge of this since I go back and forth to work and I stop at the Buells for their great produce, often. And I, I've seen, uh, throughout the years, a lot of standing water. And I've always wondered how he, he, they were able to continue to farm. So, uh, I, I do know there, there's a real problem here, and therefore I fully support the petition proceeding to the second hearing.
Oh, I will add, uh, what, what I have seen today, it convinces me that the, the benefits of the proposed improvements will presumably outweigh its cost, and I think it is conducive to the public welfare and, uh, and also improvement that is necessary. So I think it meets the criteria.
Yeah, I echo same, same comments. This one clearly is an issue, needs to be addressed. We'll see if, as the, as the process goes to the next stage, we'll see how that, like that.
Vote on motion 21-960. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, with that, we do have you to go back into executive session.
Resolution Number 21-961 in the matter for adjourned into executive session for consideration of appointment, employment, compensation of a public employee or public official for collective bargaining.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion, vote?
Vote on motion 21-961. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
We are in executive session.